Welcome to our meeting. First thing we'll do is open the meeting to the public to address the board on any topic you may wish to do at this time. There'll be another chance later in the meeting if something comes up in the meeting you want to comment on. Anyone? Okay, we'll open the meeting to the public for now, but I can see another chance later on.
I don't know. It's open to the public. He said it's open to the public.
Well, I would like you to read that if you can, and later on you can discuss it a little.
What's that?
The proposal for redevelopment.
Oh, okay. I just got into that.
I know you did.
We can do that on the correspondence. We can have Donna read it if she wants.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll bring this up, and then we'll talk about it and stuff.
Got it.
Okay. Minutes of the previous meeting, August 6th. Are there any errors or omissions noted by anyone?
I make a motion to accept the minutes as read or printed.
Second. The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes are approved, bills. Do we have any additions, or?
No.
Only additions?
No.
I make a motion that bills be paid.
I'll second that one.
Okay, motion is second. Any questions on the comments on the bills? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those are paid. Correspondence. Donna, would you read the correspondence, please?
Sure. We have two letters this evening from the Dodge Memorial Library in their informational purposes. The first one's dated August 14th, 2018. Dear Mayor Bather and Village Trustees, the trustees of the Rousas Point Dodge Memorial Library voted to move Mary Ann Brown to the position of library page permanent part-time to replace Ms. Ashmore, who was leaving at the end of August. Ms. Brown already has an approved civil service application on file. She will begin her new hours on September 4th, 2018. Sincerely, James Jerome. And the next one is dated August 14th, 2018. Dear Mayor Bather and Village Trustees, the trustees of the Rousas Point Dodge Memorial Library voted to reinstate Sarah Diaz to the position of library page on an as-needed basis. She already has an approved civil service application on file. Sincerely, James Jerome. And do you want me to read what?
Uh, yeah, might as well put that in here.
Or does Connie want to? No, I don't want to. This is from Connie Casaba. Rousas Point Revitalization and Economic Development Plan. The future of Rousas Point has the charming village on the lake. There have been several attempts to revitalize the village over the past decade, yet the town continues to be in a serious downward spiral with only a handful of businesses remaining and a row of empty buildings on Lake Street. The current situation requires immediate and aggressive attention, action, sorry. The village on the lake has an identity. Though bruised and beaten, it is still there. Small-scale vintage buildings, hanging flower baskets, and tree-lined streets give us a glimpse of what is possible. This revitalization plan proposes we start now, today, this week before the few businesses we have left vanish. This plan addresses the three top problems the downtown faces. Number one, unsightly empty storefronts, yet nothing available to rent. Two, noisy and including truck traffic and its continuous flow through town. And three, limited parking. These problems were identified in the revitalization plan 11 years ago. Today, there are more empty storefronts, more truck traffic, less parking. Empty storefronts. A plan to reclaim our village is to buy the empty buildings one by one and give them the facades, the buildings they deserve, and businesses they deserve. Please see the illustration. Using lakeside copies as a template, this business would cater to the same clientele hoping highly of Lakeside after Lakeside closes for the day and provide a destination for tourists and local residents. It would bring people and money to the downtown. A why in, like, Tappus?
Yeah.
Tappus bar would be a suggestion. To do this, we must, number one, raise the money to purchase the building, and two, have some control over the type of business. Next category is truck traffic. Truck traffic is the antithesis of vintage charm. Conversation on the street is almost impossible, and you have to be so focused when you drive you can't see the stores. You can't look up to see the storefronts. One Wednesday in July, we clocked the trucks going by at a one per minute. Not only are trucks bad for the business, they cause real health problems. Risk hearing damage in just eight hours of truck traffic at nine decibels. American Academy of Audiology, ninety decibels is average for trucks. Workers exposed to diesel exhaust face the risk of health effects ranging from irritation of the eyes and nose to respiratory disease and lung cancer, OSHA. Let's get the trucks out of downtown. The idea that truckers are shopping in Rousas Point is ludicrous as the idea that the removal of trucks would prevent shoppers. How many successful villages have a truck road down the center of town? Parking. There is a two-hour parking limit during business hours, but is not enforced. The tenants from the upstairs apartments park on the street and leave their cars there all day. Can we find some volunteers to place reminders on their windshield and if necessary, take additional action? We could start this project today. Additional information. We keep records at the gallery. Here is what we found. Ninety percent of our customers are tourists or from out of town. We average three visitors per day in our store. We sell equal amounts to men and women. The main question we are asked is what else can we do in Rousas Point? I would encourage you to develop tourism by using what we have and by being creative and smart. If we do that in 20 years, we will still have a charming village on the lake.
I want to pass this around.
I got a copy of it.
Oh, okay.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address each one of these like individually, or go through them so that we can keep focused on what we're talking about.
Yep.
I'll just mention studying all the truck traffic downtown and the safety of truck traffic. One year before I was a trustee, and then last year, in my second year of being a trustee, the village requested on my behalf a study of trucks in the downtown. I wanted the speed limit lowered to 25 miles an hour from Gainesbury, up here to Shayside Highway. We were shot down both times. So, being a state route that comes right through our village, we are very limited on what we can do or what we can even say. So, as far as trucks are concerned, I mean, that's what I have to add to it on the floor. The others may have something.
Can we try again? Is there something about that?
The state, you state won't do nothing. No, you have to have an act of Congress or somebody to take and lower the speed limit to 25.
A lot of folks have requested a traffic light at the corner of State Montgomery and Main Street. The state refuses, even listen about it, and...
Because there have to be so many fatalities. They're getting desperately in the city.
There are three.
There's gonna be so many people killed before they take action.
There's three. Killed.
Even when we were sitting in the coffee shop last year, a woman stopped in front of the coffee shop, she opened up the door, big truck came, took the door right off. And yes, and yes, yes.
Yes.
She had reached over to get some of her purse. If she hadn't, that would have been like a tally.
One time I had an idea of getting the state to reroute the road from coming off of... See, what they did is they expanded 276 into a wide road. You know, it's a two-lane road, but it's got wide shoulders and 12-foot lanes in it. And I thought, okay, they made that all brand-new from Route 11 all the way down to, well, all the way around. And I thought, if it came off the end of what they call the knuckle, it went straight across the railroad yard and tapped into Route 2. In other words, if you're coming off Route 2, you just more or less go straight across and get on 276, and you bypass the whole village.
Perfect.
Now, that became more doable over the years, in my opinion, because the railroad is dwindling down. I mean, it used to be there was, I don't know, 15, 20 sidings and tracks, and they've taken most of them out now.
Yeah, they only got two now.
Two, so you'd just be going over two railroad tracks. So, I think it's like potentially feasible to do that. Now, the problem, the downside of that was, when we were talking about it 20 years ago, was they said, yeah, the trucks will go that way, and so will all the cars, and then you won't have any cars stopping in Rousas Point.
That's not true.
Well, I mean, that's what...
They love the lake.
I'm just saying what the other store owners, like in that time, it was...
It was up on the corner. I know about that.
Yeah.
And they don't stop there anyways, you know? So, it's a sense.
So, I mean, possibly we could, you know, I suppose we probably have better, have like some kind of public hearing to get better input, but if the public feels that this would be a way to go, we could start beginning a petitioning process to our DOT and our congresspeople and, you know, state reps.
That would be great.
But that wouldn't happen overnight. I mean, that might take 10 years to happen.
Yeah. Was Billy Jonesby in that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He'd be the way you'd be looking.
Quite often, hey, we've seen him.
Right, but realistically, it's a long shot that the state will agree to put another road in, and even if they agree, it's a long-term planning.
Well, wait till somebody gets killed. I've had my side being irritated.
Oh, I understand.
Other times, and it's not...
It's a narrow space downtown.
It got weird. We had one time, everybody thought the trucks were speeding. So, we had the police chief at the time, it was Bob St. Johnson. I had him sit out there, and he ran radar on it for like a week, couple hours a day, and logged every truck that went through here, the speed. None of them over 30. It looked, because they're so big and the road's so small, it looks like they're going 90, you know, but they were going, you know, between 25 to 30 miles an hour. He gave me the list of them, like hundreds of trucks he'd checked. Remember that?
Yep.
Because, you know, it does look like they're going, and the worst is those chip trucks, those wood chip trucks.
Yeah, and when they downgrade or whatever.
Yeah.
Boom, you do need to reenter.
Yeah, that jake brake they got on there.
We discussed that also. I brought it up in the...
Especially coming down Champlain Street.
The liability we would get into if we set a village ordinance, asking them not to use their air brake, their jake brake.
Right.
I call them, is the fact that if they have an accident, or if there's a problem, they'll come back on the village and say, well, the village ordinance said so. I don't know how other villages get away with it, but I would be concerned about the liability that would come back on us. We could, I've asked that question also.
I'll ask our administrator to look into that, on those, what do they call those?
Jake brakes.
No, but there's a generic term that they use that you put on the side, and it's, you know, compression brakes, or no, it's not just air brakes, it's that, you know, downshift.
Oh, and the air brakes, the cat jumps up three feet.
Yeah, not just air brakes, it's, you know, what they call, but anyway, that's something that we could look into and feasibly, at least get that eliminated, if it's legal to do it.
Because they elderly have a rage across...
We look back in the minutes. We just had this discussion when Mayor LeTunnel was in.
And he researched it.
He researched it, and it was quite a problem.
Really?
Okay.
Because the state wrote.
Because the state wrote.
Because I had requested.
We look into it.
Right.
And he brought up the liability issue and whatever else.
They could call us Cuomo.
Yeah.
Yeah, or his brother.
I'll tell you, if you want to get anything out of those guys, right now's the time to do it, to give away the storage, you know, all of them. But we've done, you know, we've done, this downtown saga has been, we've been doing this for 30 years, and we've been making improvements. We've got the, a couple off-street parking lots, and Pete Natowski was one of the ones that got that, the parking lot on Washington Avenue back there, and then we expanded over when some more buildings burnt down, we made it bigger. And we have tried, I don't know, I mean, we might be able to ask the sheriff to force the parking a little bit. I mean, they're not gonna have somebody up here just going up and down the street, like parking.
No, I thought volunteers could do that.
Well, yeah, a warning thing, or just a...
And don't they have parking behind the alleys for the residents?
Yeah, but they don't park behind the alleys.
Because the alleys are so narrow, and then when they come out, it's hard to get out of there to turn on the Lake Street.
Well, if the big trucks are coming.
Well, I asked somebody that I knew lived upstairs, and he parked right in front of our building, and he said, yeah, but if I park here, I'm only six feet from the stairway.
Oh.
Well, you gotta right to park there.
No, it's two-hour parking, no. That's the problem, is nobody's enforcing the two hours, is what they're saying.
Yeah. Did we send out a letter to all landlords, building owners, that remind them that it's not legal to park more than two hours on the street by their tenants or anyone? How about overnight parking? I assume that then is still under the two-hour?
No, it says from eight to five.
Oh, eight to five.
During the daytime, two hours.
And that's all we want, is just somebody that can even go to a job.
And that was, the two hours came up because that's about the time it takes to get your hair done.
Yes.
That's what I was.
Our head just got to call.
Yeah. Well, I guess for you guys, two hours are clocked. That's something administrator and clerk you could look into about sending some letters out, or maybe, maybe our code enforcement guy?
Yeah, we'll look into the process for that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
We'll try to do something about the two-hour parking.
I think you could, yeah.
Empty storefronts. Trustee Blunt has been working on some things that maybe you can't share the whole plan with, but... Well, there's two aspects here. One is that obviously there's buildings that certainly are unappealing looks-wise, and some may be in violation of certain codes, and the code enforcement officer has reported they is working under the laws in place for those store owners to comply or face penalties. So, that's, you know, in progress, but in time, we'll see how that works out.
It's been in progress for a couple of years now, that it's looking like that.
Well, they look like that, but we, the code officer is actually working on certain, identified code violations that we've been able to do. Now, that store owner, the fix those violations, and then he's fine, because they have no real value. Firstly, I have addressed an idea that purchasing of those buildings in some fashion would be advantageous to the village. I don't think those buildings have any commercial value, they only have rental value, and I think that's why they're still there and not being used for any other purpose. The building's like they are now. Right. In a present state.
Yeah, I saw the owner one day, and he said, I'll fix it up if you want to rent it. I mean, I'll fix the inside and put new floors and everything. I was thinking of an antique shop, and he said, I'll fix it up for you, and I'll do this and that and the other, but then I thought, you know, it would be too much for me to handle by myself, so... But he said he would, he'd fix it up, so...
I see, I don't see any activity, haven't seen any activity in a while.
No, I guess you have to.
But I think, as I discussed with you Connie, that we need to get some investors that are interested. I am working on one angle of that.
And so are we, yes.
I don't know everybody, and so, I think it needs a major change, and I think, in my opinion, the only way we're gonna make progress is for those buildings to be purchased and then dealt with accordingly, depending on...
That's the problem. I don't know what you envision as dealt with accordingly. I'd like to see them revitalized, like I did with the Proud Patriot, you know, something like that.
I just, I just think an investor will look at what it would take and the square footage available, and none would be interested. And if you could find one, I'd be, the village would be glad to discuss any plans they had, but I, you know, in this day and age, I think any of those buildings are non-viable from a commercial standpoint.
Right, either they're too small, or whatever, they don't have enough...
And the rental income is not worth the investment in what we're into it, so I, basically, that applies to just about everything on the west side of Lake Street.
Well, we're looking for investors, and not to make a profit, but to help the village.
Either way, we're just looking for businesses to revitalize, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, we're stopping the grounds, making phone calls, spreading the word, I'll be at the planning board meetings, again, spreading the word, who knows, you know, maybe we'll connect with some people who have a plan. If we could get some interest from landlords and building owners, it would be nice if somebody could get a hold of a grant share, you know, 50/50.
Right, right, that's what we need.
Get a grant, but it has to be matched 50% by the building owner in order to improve their fronts. Give them some incentive to improve some of these buildings. Well, that's another idea, you know, if you like that.
There were grants given out maybe five years ago, or six years ago, or three, I was saying, like, two weeks ago.
Well, that was just for starting up a micro-business, micro-entered by its grants. There was also some revitalization money for facades and stuff like that before that.
And what happened to that?
Well, some buildings were, had new fronts put on, I can't identify every one, but there's, you had new exteriors.
Coffee shop was one.
Okay, yeah, so that, yeah, but that wasn't a lot of money in those grants, so...
Yeah.
The coffee shop was kind of a special deal, though. I wasn't completely involved in that, but that was, she tracked down a pretty substantial grant or matching fund or something, and that's how they did that so professionally. And then the rest of them, they had up to $10,000 you could borrow from this fund that they had to revive, redo your storefront, like Alan Kaufman did one of his.
Yeah.
And Rayes was gonna do his, but then he decided not to do it because it was restricted.
There was a couple of apartment houses that they were designing.
Yeah, there's about three of them, well, the ones, you can see which ones they did about 15 years ago.
Yeah, one they didn't stop by, and let them do it anyway.
The village is actively, always actively looking for any types of grant money, grant programs.
Yes, yes.
Sometimes, you know, it's competitive process, the token guarantees, you know, unless we actually are, afford the grant, we can't plan to spend any money.
The other thing that we do, too, that we're really actively on, it's really more of our bailiwick as a board, is that we try to keep the cost of living in the village as low as we can. Low taxes, low utility rates. We try to keep the infrastructure up as high level as we can. You go to a lot of towns, they got problems with their water, they got problems with their sewer, they don't have any sidewalks, they don't have a fire department, everything's... Ours isn't like that. I mean, we've tried to keep it right up to, more than any other place in Clinton County, I would say.
Yeah, it looks very nice.
And that's why everybody that comes to Rousas Point, and I'm not kidding, I have a girlfriend coming from Charles in South Carolina, and she just loves Rousas Point. She can't wait to get here. She's been twice in the last year. She thinks it's wonderful, the paintings, everything, you know?
Yep.
And everybody I know, I mean, even my husband and I retired here from New Jersey, so, you know, and we had folks here, too, but, you know, instead of going south, they're staying here. It's a wonderful little town. And every day I have two or three cars stopping on Pine Street and walking across the street and taking pictures.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm so afraid they're gonna get hit with cars, you know? But they, it's all, I'm working on seeing if...
It's only gonna take three of them to get it there.
Yep.
One thing I would like to see, and I don't know how we'd even do this, but I think if we could get a modern hotel in here about where the anchorage was, even if it was a Motel 6 or something, but just a chain but a modern one, and, you know, I mean, architecturally look to fit in.
Yeah.
But I mean, not some decrepit old thing. And then, you know, then we, because you really, you have to have certain things in a community. You have to have a post office, you have to have a place to eat, you have to have a place to sleep, and, you know, we don't really have a motel right now in the village.
Oh, I know, except the B&amp;B, and that's always filled up, and they don't run it in the winter times.
Yeah.
And when she runs out of rooms, she calls over to her mom and sends them over there, you know, which is fine with me, but if we had a hotel, they'd be here.
The village always supported getting one, and we've made many contacts over the years, and the issue still comes down to the bigger, all the chains, they just look at traffic patterns and population and the numbers, you know, they put it in the spreadsheet, and we just don't come out on the...
Well, we could just tell them, wanna be a Lake Plaza or a Little Lake George.
Serenac Lake.
Serenac Lake.
Serenac Lake, yeah.
And, you know, it just...
And we have had a hotel, and it did fill up, so...
Well, when the anchorage was going, it was always full. Problem with the anchorage is, the newest building's 35 years old, you know, and the main part isn't there anymore.
Now, we're still open for business, and that's the key, and we're striving to find people interested, and the village will, the village will do its part to work with any developer.
Oh, that would be...
To me, you know, like, I'm just, the reason I threw that in is I see that as a doable thing, you know, the lot is there, the view is there where the anchorage is, to get something in there. Downtown, I understand, recognize, and agree with all that you're saying about it, but it's a real hard lift to do that, you know?
I know.
From a village standpoint, from a municipal government standpoint.
From any standpoint, yeah.
Yeah. But, I mean, in other places, just asking for something nice to be put there, you know, some Adirondack-style-looking, you know, restaurant.
Rousas Point-style looking, yeah.
We do have a nice restaurant now that we just have, and he's gonna do more, he's gonna open up a close to the street and have, you know, people come over in their boats and so on.
I'd like to see a huge hotel chain, upscale hotel chain, get in the conversation with the pods over here on the corner of Route 2 with the very corner lot.
I think that's a wonderful lot.
And have a huge conference room heaven, and that would be a draw to the village as well as people staying there, and they could throw in a restaurant or whatever they want.
People coming off the ridge, they're looking for rooms, coming off the ridge, sometimes there's ten or more coming off there, looking, you know? Yeah, that's perfect.
We can nudge it all we want, but sometimes we need to help from those guys, if you want to do it. The traffic's there, traffic slows there.
Yeah, well, we're gonna do something, yeah.
Do you have anything else you'd like to address?
No, I think that's, that's pretty good.
Okay, we got a lot of other stuff.
Okay, go ahead. That's all right.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your input, and keep in touch with us.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, we did the, all the correspondence, okay, it's on next year. I have a resolution for Steve Merchant, and what we want to do is pass the resolution tonight and then present it to him Thursday. Where is it? The intention of the Board of Trustees of the Village Rousas Point to thank Steve Merchant for his dedication and commitment to the Friends of the Stage and the Village Rousas Point, and where is Steve has been a member of the Friends of the Stage since its inception in 2009, and where is Steve was instrumental in the construction and expansion of the Rousas Point Samuel D. Champagne, Champlain Center stage, and where is Steve has spent countless hours securing entertainment for the Rousas Point Samuel D. Champagne Summer Stage programs, and Sue also, by the way.
Yes.
Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village Rousas Point recognizes and thanks Steve Merchant for his service to the residents of the village and conveys its gratitude for his commitment. This resolution shall take effect immediately, and I will bring that to the floor for a second.
I second that.
Okay. Roll call, vote. Trustee Arnold? Aye. Trustee Dard? Aye. Trustee LeBlanc?
Aye.
And Mayor votes aye.
What's the plans for presentation? Is that this Thursday?
Well, she's gonna, she's making the one up. This Thursday is the last one that he's gonna be at.
This Thursday, right.
Yeah.
And you're gonna, you're gonna...
Probably, yeah, yeah, that's the plan. Okay, now, we have a Municipal Electric Utilities Association proxy. Since we're not sending anyone to the annual conference, we need to, it's in Buffalo. They ask us for a proxy, which means they're, we're giving permission for them to vote on our behalf. So, whereas an annual conference in the Municipal Electric Utilities Association of So, um, whereas an annual conference in the Municipal Electric Utilities Association of New York State has been called from September eleventh to fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to be held at Adams Marks Hotel and Event Center, Buffalo, New York, and whereas in accordance with the bylaws of Municipal Electric Utilities Association of New York State, municipal member may cast one vote on each transaction properly brought before this meeting. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the MEUA Executive Committee be and is hereby designated as the accredited delegate of the Village Rouse's Point. In your roll call vote, trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Darred?
Aye.
Trustee LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Okay, you want me to come down and sign that tomorrow morning? We have to sign this to send it in?
Yes, it doesn't have to be sent in three weeks, so if you wanna wait till Wednesday when I have the, um, resolution done for Mr. Merchant?
Okay, um, I have one other item here, it appears that we have a large quantity of paint left over from painting this building. I think it's like thirteen pails, Brian, or...
Are they five gallon pails, or?
Yeah, five gallon pails.
Eleven.
Eleven. Eleven, so it's fifty-five gallons of paint at about forty bucks a gallon. Now, my question is, I think that we should attempt to return it, because they were the ones that came up here and estimated how much paint, we bought what they told us we needed to do to this building. So...
We've already sent the email and request to start that process.
Or anything yet?
Not yet.
Okay. So that's what I wanted to see, is make sure that's going, if it turns out somehow that we can't, then we'll, next meeting we'll address, uh, some other building to paint, I guess, but I don't think, I think everybody's painted out for this year. I don't think the crews, um, I know the Pelkeys have volunteered to come in and paint on the weekends, but I don't think anybody else wants to. If we do end up with a bunch of paint, we wanna paint a building, it's gonna have to be next year. Okay, that's all I have. Trustee Arnold?
I have two things, uh, on the safety.
Yes.
Uh, I give you each a report on that. For, uh, first aid kits, for fire extinguishers, five pounds and two pounds. We need, uh, ten first aid kits for all the trucks.
Okay.
Okay, and we need five, five pound fire extinguishers, and we need two, two pounds, two and a half pound fire extinguishers. And you can see the price of them, Midstate, uh...
Now, what do you need the two and a half pound ones for, Ben? The small, no, I know what they are, but what do you need them for?
The two trucks, uh, one is for, uh... Oh no, John's got it here, John had two of them and stuff like that.
Well, I would recommend...
You got two two and a half pounders here.
I would recommend, 'cause I was told when I took that Essentials of Firemanship, that George told me, I always get five pounds, nothing less.
One for the high rad and one for the water plant car.
I think they should be five pounders.
Okay.
Just make them all five pound fires, if you got a fire, you want them on, all you got.
Okay. So, in the first aid kits, uh, there's ten of them.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you can see at the bottom the three different prices, Granger, Midstate, and Air Gas. You can see the difference in price for all of them and stuff, and that would bring up our, uh, our equipment, the bar and stuff, so, if you wanna go with that, it's up to you.
Um, now, were these first aid kits, did you look at pictures of them or anything, or?
They have to be OSHA-approved.
Right, I mean, do they have like brackets to mount them, some of them? You know, some of them probably just throw in the trunk, but I mean, other ones, you want them mounted someplace where they bolted on.
Like the one, the one that's in the, in the village office, down on the stairs, I think that one, take that one out of there and move it into the water plant, and buy a small one and put inside the village office.
Okay.
Okay? And the one that's in central garage, leave there. And then, Tim, you have one up to the store plant, which is okay, and they gotta be, they gotta be, uh, OSHA-approved or...
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah.
And stuff like that, you gotta have so many different things in them and stuff, so, that's why we went with the, the other ones here, Midstate.
So that's the one you're recommending, is Midstate or the Granger?
No, Midstate. Midstate is twenty-seven, Granger is twenty-nine, and Air Gas is fifty-six.
Well, my opinion is we should get the, get all this stuff except upgrade to two, two pound, two and a half to five pounders.
Okay.
And, uh, it's on, I, did anybody ever find out what happened to those six or seven of them that were in the evidence room there, and they all disappeared, those five pounders that were there?
Yeah, they, they went in different trucks.
Did they actually, do we use them then?
Yeah, they went to the trucks, eh?
They came down here.
Oh, they came down here?
They, yeah, some came here.
Some came here?
Okay, just as long as we've got them someplace, they've been tested to their, you know, current...
Right, yeah.
Okay, what's the board's wishes on this?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, we approve the figures with your, uh, upgrades as, as written, and we go with, uh, Midstate for the price for the first aid kits.
Okay, so we need ten first aid kits, is that what I read here?
Yes.
Ten first aid kits and, uh...
So it'll be seven, uh, five pounders.
Seven five pound fire extinguishers, we'll change the figures just slightly.
Yeah.
And so that comes out to two seventy plus about, um, three forty.
Thirty bucks, yeah.
Three forty. So, okay. An emotional, uh, buy this from somebody?
That's my motion.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, on that, so...
Ben, you wanna follow up on that? I have the office to make up the purchase orders for you and stuff.
Yeah, well, Johnny's the one that's gonna order them, or whatever, from Midstate or whatever, 'cause they come down and stuff, so...
Okay, just kinda stay on top of it.
Oh yeah, oh yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
And with all the other stuff, uh, on the safety equipment, the helmets, the gloves, the steel toe shoes and all that, everybody's in compliance with that.
Good, and we're getting there.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we probably have to do this about every five or ten years to just...
Right.
Bring everything up to date.
'Cause some, like the orange shirts, somebody said that they requested orange shirts. Well, orange shirts are all right, but soon as they get dirty and stuff like that, they're no good.
Yeah.
So the blue shirts are gonna stay, and long they wear their vest.
Yeah.
So they have to wear their vest. You don't have their, their vest on, or when they're grinding or, or chipping or something, and they don't have their glasses on, they're gonna be told and stuff, so...
I know, just the man in charge telling them too.
Yeah.
Not bashful, right, Ben?
Right. So, all right. Uh, then I got a, uh, a call from, uh, Don Farrow on, uh, Chapman Street about the railroad tracks being so rough.
Yes.
And he talked to this, uh, Jeremy Vander, uh, Vanderpool, and Mr. Peters, you wanna take this over?
Uh, I haven't heard back from Mr. Vanderpool yet.
Oh, you haven't heard back?
No, I have not.
Okay, well, anyhow, Mr. Farrow contacted him, and he talked to him and stuff, and he's the head of the road, uh, crew, or the railroad crew on the crossings and stuff, and he said, they're thinking about putting a new, uh, refixing the Chapman Street crossing over next year. They're thinking about it.
They need to do all, you know, yesterday I drove across some great crossing around here in the middle of nowhere, like out West Jay-Z, and it was as smooth as glass, and there wasn't probably two cars an hour going across. We've got Pratt Streets, the heaviest cross, crossing they have probably up in this area, and that's rough too. I mean, that's not a smooth crossing.
No.
The other ones are, they're just damage your car on them.
Oh yeah, 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 it's really bad, yeah. So I didn't know either if the village could put a little coal patch around the, around some of the holes or something, for now, or could we get in trouble for doing that? I don't know.
I addressed this in the screen, and I spoke with Mr. Farrow myself, because there is one rail where there was, close to it, it needed some coal patch, and I think he's still talking about the same one, and by us putting coal patch there, it would interfere with this boot thing that they've got next to the, next to the rail, so, the opinion I got was advise that the railroad would take care of it, not the village. The gentleman persuaded the, persuaded railroad to move a little faster on that, a little letter from the village, and saying this is a safety issue, and...
I think we could do that. Draft the letter and I'll sign it, if you get a chance, you got it.
Okay, well, I, I got the guy's number, the Vanderpool and stuff like that, and all that, and everything, so...
Okay, good, yeah.
All righty, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, trustee Darred?
Thank you. Glad you could be this covered here tonight. First, ladies, I, I do want to tell you that for several months now, our administrator, Mr. Peters, has been working diligently on community development. So, we've had irons in the fire, and he's got some irons in the fire right along, so it is something we take serious, and he's been leading the charge in some of these areas, so, I just wanted to share that with you.
That's a little vague.
What, what's that mean?
Um, irons in the fire and something going on. Could we be more specific?
Right, we, we're looking at grants, as we said earlier, and we'd like to work with the business owners to see if we can encourage them to fix their storefronts, and there's a lot of other issues, there's, there's coissues that we need to talk with some of the businesses about, it's a whole thing, but we don't have any tangible money right now in our hands to say anything about being just, just being paid.
Okay.
And give you a picture of everything we're working on, but my comment was just to merely state that we have been, and we, we've got an administrator that has been working on this for quite a while, and the board works on it too.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, first thing I have is an update on the wastewater treatment plant chlorine injections. My understanding, the two pumps have been installed.
Oops.
And, uh, they need to be fine tuned before we have a definable conclusion concerning operation and with their relation to alarms. The last I knew, there's some math formula that the pump tech had to research, because there were so many pounds for whatever, that formula he wasn't aware of, and I'd like Mr. Graves, our wastewater treatment plant operator, to, uh, tell us where you're at with those pumps.
The, uh, control panel that runs the pumps has been installed and is taking information from flows, send them to the pumps, and telling the pumps when to pump more or pump less because of the flows. We're tweaking it to get our chlorine residue at a sustainable level.
Yes.
So that we cover all our speedies requirements. As of today, we've had, uh, constant chlorine residue, it needs to be brought up just a little more, so we, we're working on it at a small increase. Once this is all taken care of, we have to then figure out if we will at any time, depending on the flows, uh, be in violation with our permit, which we don't think will ever happen. If this all works, it's sooner later through the, the dropping it automatically and raising it automatically, set it manually, we should start being able to see the savings in our chlorine, because we're not wasting it, and, uh, all our testing should be better.
Okay, and as you've mentioned, this is gonna be a process you have to fine tune before we can really say for sure that we've got an active system going on up there.
It, it's gonna take a little while to see the savings, but eventually it will show us a savings in that.
Thank you, either Ben or I will, uh, you know, get with you as you make progress and we can report back to the board.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, update on the answering service, as you're aware, at the, uh, last board meeting, I had suggested, now that we don't have a, an open sub-ship at the water plant, and folks are used to calling the water plant, and for other various, uh, various items that would be covered by an overnight shift, such as alarms and, and whatever else, Mr. Pelkey, our building, our, excuse me, our Public Works Supervisor and I, we're gonna get together, uh, tossed a couple things back and forth, but he knows of a person that, he's gonna contact, uh, to see how this person can help us out. This person is already doing some things for us now, and if this person could help us out, then we might not have to pay for an answering service, an independent answering service that I was suggesting, called, we're still working on that. The other, the other part of that I'm working on is, I went around to some of the department supervisors and asked them in, in what circumstances or what alarms they would wanna be notified at, and I've got their, I've got their feelings, I've spoken to sewer, I've spoken to water, I've gotta speak with Public Works, I've gotta speak with our administrator concerning the rec center, and I've gotta speak with the mayor, see if anything he wants to know about, get called out about, you know, so, I'll be, I'll be getting with those, so that's, that's where I'm at on the answering services. We have a Public Works maintenance position that has been open for roughly one year. I've spoken with Mr. Pelkey recently about this, and it's been an ongoing thing, and I know that the board has worked back and forth, and we've advertised for this position. I'm gonna suggest that, uh, at, at this time, that we abandon filling the position, however, but leave it, leave it an open slot for civil service. We have the manpower right now to assist in some things that this position might have been helping with, even though they may not be on a mechanical or a maintenance level. We do have adequate staff, um, this manpower, at this time we have Zachary Roberts and Grant Dean available to Public Works, and to be shared by other departments as they need them. Uh, this position was open for one year, as of August fourth this year. Public Works has gone through enough scenarios that the board can recognize that things have gone rather smoothly in the past year, uh, without that slot being filled as identified as a Public Works maintenance person, so, that's my proposal, that we, we abandon the idea of thinking about it, we proceed like we are, however, don't take, we don't wanna get the, the position off the books, we wanna leave it open.
Right.
So that we can fill it at any time we deem necessary.
We can keep it funded in the budget too.
Absolutely, we'll keep something funded in the budget, right?
Yep.
So we can look at that next budget year.
Yeah. Okay.
What do you think? Sound good?
Yeah.
For now?
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I wanna request an executive session regarding the employment history of a particular person. I wanna re, uh, request an executive session relating to the, uh, public employee collective bargaining agreement, and, uh, when it says employee, there's an S, so there's a couple people involved here.
Okay, you have a motion for request an executive session for...
Two, uh, two of them, or what, what amount, the three of them, yes.
Yeah, we have to request each one separately, don't we?
The one under employees can be one, for the two employees is the same.
For the first two there?
Yes.
Yes, so I'm requesting...
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then your second one?
Yes, to, uh, speak with the board, uh, and the administration yourself about the, uh, the employee collective bargaining agreement.
Is this for the sick leave, the...
No, no, that's, I've got that next.
Okay.
Oh.
Okay, I see what you did. Okay, you have a request?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right. We have a request from an employee for a sick leave, uh, bank approval. Gentlemen, you have in, in your pack tonight, uh, a little background information concerning, uh, some leaving requests, and so, as, uh, chair personnel, I'm bringing that for approval.
Okay, um, okay, motion to approve this, um, sick leave sharing request, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No? Okay, that's approved.
And just, uh, just one item left for housekeeping. Uh, been approached by a couple employees, and then actually somebody called my house, the resident, about my timeout. I spent an extensive amount of time out in July, you folks are all aware of it why, and I had a vacation in the first part of the month, and then, uh, some issues with my wife, health issues that I'm dealing with, so, I was cleared to leave the house and really vigorously get back into my trustee duties, uh, and I anticipate that, you know, I still will be able to, but I just have to work with this. So, I, I just want everybody to be aware that I'm, I'm very much full-time in my trustee duties, I love my trustee duties, I look forward to the remaining time, probably running again, you know, down the road, and, um, I have an interest in every department, regardless of what they are, whether I share them or not, you know, I have an interest in, in every department, so, uh, my heart's with the village. Thank you, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Trustee LeBlanc?
Uh, one quick note, I had a call from the library, they said they had secured some type of grant money for asbestos remediation, I guess in the Dayton, I passed that out, and information on to the administrator, so it's just...
Yeah, I talked to her this morning about that, and we will be doing, um, well, we got the money for the asbestos, I've asked Public Works to, for them to go down and estimate the lights for the basement, new lighting down there, we'll put LED lights in, and that should be funded through IEP, and then I guess as soon as the asbestos is removed, then we can put the new furnace in. All that, you know, none of that needs to be done for a couple months, but we wanna get the numbers going so we can...
Is that all cleaned out now and stuff?
I, no, she said you were gonna help. That's what Susan told me, she said, Benny Arnold, are you just gonna help us clean out the basement? Oh boy!
Lightening it out, we're gonna be...
Hold on to your hat, this is gonna be clean.
Yeah.
We can go for that story.
Yeah.
But anyways, that's looking good down there, I mean, we're moving along in the library pretty good, and, um, with this grant, that was kind of a bottleneck that was holding everything, the asbestos removal grant. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, my major item, uh, for this meeting is, I'm a little concerned about this, about the, uh, current state of our IT systems and some of the, uh, the age of some of our computer hardware. I talked to the administrator about this, I'd like to get our IT vendor to do a complete review and ensure that we have the highest level of protection from outside intrusion, and also I'd like to, uh, upgrade some of the, uh, the hardware that we have, but, uh, on the recommendation of our IT vendor, to make sure we have a system that will support everything we need to do, and, uh, I know some of the hardware is pretty flaky using it, I noticed that myself, and I think we need to upgrade our level of some of our Microsoft And I think we need to upgrade our level of some of our Microsoft software, uh, operating systems, and make sure that, uh, all our anti-malware software is, is in place, and a level of protect, protected as we can be. I don't want to ever be in some situation, uh, which is very common, be held hostage by ransomware, where we have to bail out the, the village.
Now, do you have a cost estimate for the evaluation portion of this, roughly?
I don't know, I think, uh, it won't, it's...
Our initial, uh, initial quote for just the, um, just that review, plus some transfer of software was like in the fifteen hundred dollar range. But, uh, it didn't include the upgrades to Microsoft Office, and there's some additional elements there that we need to pull together before it can be presented in a good package for you.
I'm sure it won't be under ten thousand dollars, I assume.
What is it?
Microsoft speaks about budget officer.
So I'm wondering, I don't remember, I don't remember anybody asking for that, the budget. But I was, what I was getting at was, did we have an idea, like, for the guy to just come in, evaluate the system, and give us a rough idea of what we're looking at, what needs to be upgraded, the cost of upgrading, so we can do it like a two-stage thing, like get this rolling, what you want to do, get somebody in here to review the system and see what we're up against, and then that's where you would drive your numbers from, I would think. And I would be in favor of doing that if it was a few hundred bucks for the initial.
No, I think, I think it's all somewhat of a, like, once it's discovered...
Package deal?
Yeah, it's a package deal, we've kind of got to move forward with it, but I don't have, uh, I talked with our vendor now twice, and I'm still waiting for the updated quote with new information they were providing, so... I, i- in doing so, it will actually clean up a lot of our, uh, our vendor, like our usage in terms of, like, we, we're working with Twin State, Prime Link, and Ad Workshop.
Yeah.
And this would then end up pulling it all under one vendor, so we'll save money also in some other areas, so it won't be as...
So we can identify any extra computers that we can get rid of.
Yeah.
I'd rather have fewer that are high-quality than have a whole bunch of them that are just, you know, grinding on.
Right, right, so that has to be evaluated as well, but right now, it doesn't look like, it, it's a lot less about the hardware and a little bit more about the software and the security piece, and that's really a large part of what they're looking at.
So we can't really act on this tonight, then, let, uh...
No, I've got to get a little bit more information, but I think Trustee LeBlanc and I are working very closely to get all this pulled together, so...
Okay, so next week, next meeting, you will bring this up for action?
I, I'm hoping so.
Yeah, okay. Anything else?
Uh, that's it.
Okay, one other thing that I had that I forgot about, well, I forgot, but I would like to get the, the sign for the front of the building going this week. And to that end, um, did everyone get a copy of Trustee LeBlanc's email from Jefferd Steel?
No, I just sent it to you and...
Okay. All they did was they just sent us, they didn't send us like a drawing of what the letters were gonna look like, which is what we wanted. They just sent us like font sizes, like you have on your computer, you know, if you like this one or that one. So what I, what I think I'm gonna do is go to, go to Jefferd's tomorrow, I gotta do some other stuff in Plattsburgh. And maybe I'll take one of those letters down with us for size, and bring it down like an hour or something, and say, "Okay, this is what we want," and get the purchase order and everything, get the thing and get it going. So I'd like to get it ordered by this week.
Okay.
And get that going. And then the other thing was, the other two things that we didn't ask them for, but maybe I'll bring one of those too, is we had the, the outline of the skater and the hockey player made out of plywood.
Yep, they can do that.
They can do that with that laser cutter, make it out of the same kind of steel that the aluminum plate that the other things made. And get everything done, and, and get it up here, because I've already arranged, um, I've got the press Republican coming, uh, when, when I call them, probably the day that we, when we're installing the signs. And I'd like to get the, the crew up here that painted the building, and then we'll do a little story in the paper showing people what's been going on here in the new sign and the people that were instrumental in painting the building. Because they, they, they deserve a big thanks from the village. The village crew painted this building with in-house labor and materials and equipment. And I would estimate we saved the village about eighty-five thousand dollars at least. Because I think if we'd gone out to contract and had a commercial company come in here, pay prevailing wage rate and paint this building, I think it easily would have been eighty or ninety thousand dollars. And we did, I'm estimating, when we get all done, we're probably at ten to twelve thousand, and that includes the new signage, so... Anyway, so things are looking good, and, and this is another reminder to the public that when you have quality people on your staff that can do things that they weren't necessarily hired to do, like, you know, I got electricians up there painting and filming, um, it gets done, and that's why Mouse's point is able to do things that most of the other community around here, communities can't do. It's not a slight to them, but, you know, some of our neighbors, every time they do anything, they have to go out to bid and hire somebody to do it. And because of that, they don't get a tenth of what we get done around here, because we do it in-house with our, our people and our, our equipment, so... Anyway, for what it's worth, when you see us buying a piece of equipment for, you know, thousands of dollars, we get our money back on to use it, so...
Mr. Mayor, on the silhouettes that's out in front, are they all intact and stuff?
I don't know.
Are they broken or anything? I thought the, the hockey player had a broken stick or whatever.
Well, maybe, I mean, we can figure something out when we go down there.
Right, yeah. Okay, just, uh, yeah, 'cause I think some of it was broken off.
But they have it, most of it there, they can, they can transfer that, you know, to the computer, and that's why they're gonna...
Okay.
And we'll come up with something, and we'll have it all powder coated, and then it'll be ready to install. And, the other thing that I haven't heard an update on, uh, we do have an update on the steel, you know, that's in the process of being ordered, for the missing pieces on the sides, but, uh, have we come up with anything on the lights? The two new lights for the front, the spotlights?
I can get you a quote, and if you want the IEP to pay for them.
That's our light, get some modern-looking lights instead of those, those old spotlight bulbs sticking out there on those, on those, you know, get something nice. Alright, um, other reports. This will start with the administrator.
Uh, you have, um, in your packets, the somewhat revised process for code enforcement updates. You know, as per your directive, something we've been working on for a while, to try to get it going in this direction, and so it looks like we're proceeding, uh, I think, the right way, if you have any questions on that, let me know. Uh, you've also got updates, uh, from our rec folks, uh, just what they're working on, how that's working. I also included specifically some communications related to the Hogan's Refrigeration folks. We're, we want to make sure that we're, uh, not being taken advantage of, I just wanted you to see the process as we're going through there. Uh, not that they do that, it's just that they're the only ones around that work on facilities this large, and so we just want to make sure we're doing all the right things and, and asking all the right questions. If you've got anything on that, also, please let me know. The gutters for this building were, uh, it, it actually, we're looking at doing these locally, or trying to find them, you know, have somebody to make them for us locally. What we ended up finding is that actually the, the company that, uh, supplied us with this building forty years ago still exists, and they do still now supply the gutters for this structure, so I have those. That was moving along very quickly until the woman, uh, in Tennessee got the flu, but she's been out for eight or nine days, and so been trying to get some information about, uh, you know, shipping and getting this all done, but I do think we'll have the order by the end of the week. So that'll come through. We've, we've, to update you on the recreation maintenance worker position that we've advertised for in-house, we do have one applicant for that, the Department of Civil Service had not yet qualified him, they felt the application to be not quite where they needed it to be to qualify him, so we've gone back to that individual to have him just clarify a few points, and so that's why that is in the process. So you'll hear more from me on that, uh, as we get more information from civil service. And then Donna and Jessica and I met this morning to, um, go into somewhat final preparations, if you will, for our Most on the Coast event, which is September twenty-ninth here at the rec center. It is a artisan and craft show, which we really want to do as much as we can to showcase all the great things that are happening here on the Atlantic coast, all the crafts, um, handmade things and such that will work, you know, for, for us in this region. So that's moving along as well. Uh, we're gonna push a little bit more on the social media side, that's been done in the past, so that should help us get the attention out there, uh, in a different way than what's been seen. In addition to some of the other ways, we got it on the sign, we've got, uh, we're looking at banners and some salmon cords and things like that to get folks in the door. So, that'll be our first effort, uh, as far as that goes. Any questions, certainly let me know on any of those things.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Pelkey?
Yes, sir.
Did you do anything this week?
I was on vacation. Does that count?
No.
Okay, just to give you an update, uh, everybody wants to know when the block copping is gonna happen. The county was here Thursday and Friday, they did some shim coating, um, they don't work on Mondays, they will be here tomorrow. So hopefully by Friday, we should be pretty much wrapped up, um, getting our streets blocked up. The guys have been working on some sidewalks, trip hazards that, uh, we had formal complaints on, that we had to repair. They did some storm drains where there were some water problems, where they tapped into the storm drain and they made an inlet. The water plant, they have the number two filter back together, they have number three filter taken apart, and it's been painted, and it should be back, uh, they're, they're gonna put that one back together by Monday, and they're gonna take the last filter apart, number four, and the atom system will be all cleaned out, ready to go. I've been keeping a close eye on them, trying to get that straightened around where we can get the atom system up and running, so we can take one of the industrial systems down to change the bags, what we talked about.
Have the bags come in for that yet, I forgot?
Yes, he said the bags are here, it's just we want to make sure we have a backup.
Right.
In case something does happen, and we have a system that we can go back on. I'm not saying that we'll use the atom system, but we have to, it's there. They've been pumping about four hundred and fifty, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day, and they've been able to catch up, running the two pumps, the two industrial systems, where they're pumping over six hundred thousand a day. So it's easy to fill, so we can, uh, we can abandon that, that midnight date shift in the morning, so that's really helping out.
Now, do you think that that, uh, the atom system should be run at least once a month or something, or...
Yes, I think once it gets back online, we need to keep a closer eye on it, on the cleanliness of it and keeping it clean, flushing the filters.
Right.
And, uh, you know, making sure that we rotate the water for a bit, until we get...
So they could take and shut down the industrial system?